Have a meet.
All set.
Okay. All right, it's July 6, 2021, 7:30 PM, gonna call the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present are Doug Roberts, John Tayhans, Bob Shabbitt, and Lori Semperbahn. Lori can be seated for Andy Marco. All right, so brings us all the way down to item E, new business. Appointment of clerk of the works, three pollster road loves travel stop.
So hopefully, everybody saw in with the agenda, I did give you a bit of a memo. And if you haven't had the chance to look at it, I can go through it quickly. But for those of you who are not on the commission or just listening. Obviously, as part of the Loves project, both the the state approvals, the wetland approvals, and the Planning and Zoning Commission approvals required that the the developer basically pay for the town to have a clerk of the works on the project. So we went out to bid on those for those services, the town went out to bid for those services in April. We had an engineering and construction oversight RFQ. We 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 basically did, I guess, a direct mailing, or we 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 provided the RFQ to about 10 10 state of Connecticut firms that either we had known were in the area, or or had done the work, or were just local. We sent it out to everybody that we that we could. We had a group of staff review the submissions, the qualified submissions, there actually weren't that many. And kind of go through and try to compare apples to apples. We also had our town engineer, Joe Dillon, who they they didn't have the horsepower to submit, so they reviewed as a staff person and made sure that, you know, everything kind of looked okay from an engineer's perspective. And based on a couple of things which I outlined in the memo. CHA was the most qualified, that had demonstrated experience, also had the costs that made sense and had some certifications that no one else that submitted had. So we we felt like based on the specific type of project and the complicated components related to stormwater and septic that we felt in in speaking more with Joe, because I don't understand all of this. That was an important component to have. The Board of Selectmen delegated the authority to you folks, because this is a no cost to the town project that the developers paying for it all. So the procurement policy that the town has does not apply here. So we felt that because this commission's approval required it, that it would be more appropriate for it to come here than the Board of Selectmen. So I I gave you a basically the the overview and a suggested motion, and Pete Parent is here from CHA, just to kind of represent the project team if there's any specific questions. And I'll leave it there.
Um. I know you went over some of this previously. But for some reason, I can't zoom in on any of these documents. And if I couldn't get into at all earlier, because I had no internet, but I can pull the documents up, but I can't actually read them, because they're too small. And I've tried the Zoom, and it doesn't change the size. I don't know if anybody else had that issue.
Mike, can you share the documents?
Can you guys see that?
Yes.
Anybody want a bigger?
Yeah, it's the same sizes as what I can see on my computer.
This is pretty clear what I'm looking at.
Lori, you're not able to zoom in on what Mike's sharing?
I don't know how you, I mean, I can't zoom in on my computer, and I don't know how to zoom in on what he has. I don't think I can. Zoom ratio, okay. Okay, that's better, thank you. Doug, or whoever made that suggestion.
So just to kind of back up to one of the things that I touched on, obviously, everybody that submitted had professional engineers that had those certifications. And one of the things, or one of the certifications that that we felt was important, which was only held by CHA, and that actually is held by Pete, is a what they call a CPSWQ, which is a certified professional in stormwater quality. And so we really again wanted to make sure that the folks were not just looking at whether the parking lot was in the right place and curbing, and whether the this bank had erosion issues or not. But we really want to get into the actual nuts and bolts of the the project and dealing with stormwater and septic, because so much of what was was important and focused on, I mean, is part of this approval, but but also with inland wetlands, because because they're a big part of this too. Deals with water quality and being able to understand how all of that kind of correlates to to the overall construction and and the sequencing. And so that was that was something that both myself and Joe Dillon felt was important.
Do you, and Joe Dillon's the town engineer, correct?
Yeah, so Nathan Jacobson Associates is the towns engineer, and Joe Dillon is the the fellow who does pretty much all of our reviews.
Okay.
And he has for ever.
Is there a draft motion attached to what you're sharing?
Yep.
That's clear. Anybody on the commission have any questions? I agree that you probably want somebody with stormwater quality experience.
Of the qualified submissions, we really came down to two, there were potentially basically two others. One was BL, and the other was Colliers, which had no real local experience, they've done some some other construction related work and and sort of project management, but but again, this was really, even though it's a commercial development, this project is as much about the environment as it is about anything else. And so we were focused on some of the smaller scale nitty gritty stuff in in the the submissions.
We're CHA out of.
So and Pete can speak to that if I'm missing anything, but they're they'll probably be out of East Hartford and and stores.
Any questions from the commission?
No.
Are they planning to be there on a weekly basis or daily, semi weekly?
So basically, what will happen next is if the commission moves forward, we'll have a pre-construction kickoff meeting with all of the stakeholders. Loves has indicated to us that they have hired a site contractor, so they now know who will be constructing a facility. So we will go through the construction sequencing and and the the site arrangement and figure out how frequently they need to be there. There may be a week where they need to be there every single day, and then there may be some time where they don't, depending on what they're constructing. But I think it's important to mention that the agreement that that ultimately the town and the firm that the town hires will sign basically gives the firm the authority to act on our behalf, which means if someone goes out there and sees an egregious issue, they can shut the job down as if they are an arm of the town. So that if this is on a day when the town hall is not open, or something goes on, we don't have hours of construction continuing when they've they are acting as our authority to hopefully, you know, stop any issues that come up. So there's going to be some flexibility that the firm will have to basically monitor the job as needed, so that we can make sure that things don't get missed.
I think that's necessary.
I agree.
Hey, Mike, any idea when the plan dates for this kickoff meeting will be?
So we've been trying to get something together, there's a lot of people that that between Loves, between some of the folks on their corporate side, their construction management, and then their site contractors, coordinating with the with the state, there's a lot of people that need to be in the room. So we'll probably start the kickoff this week. And then try to filter people in, Loves wanted to start last week. So we need to get the bonds in place. There's a substantial cash bond that they need to provide to us. So once we verify through Howard and Sage that the bonds have been provided in a satisfactory manner, meaning not some hard to find credit line somewhere that that will take a year to to pull if need be. Then they can they can get started, but we need to have this in place as well.
No Bitcoin.
Yeah, right.
Dogecoin.
Oh, yeah, Dogecoin.
Okay, thanks, I don't have any other comments.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to engage the services of CHA Consulting Incorporated for the purpose of acting as the town's designated clerk of the works to provide engineering and construction oversight services as outlined in the town's RFQ 21-1 and is required by PZ-19-12 for work associated with the construction of a Loves travel stop and country store at Three Pollster Road, Wellington, Connecticut, subject to contract execution and insurance verification by town staff.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I don't know what the motion was, I keep losing my connection.
Oh, my God, I'll read it again. Can you see it up on the screen there, Lori?
Yes.
Okay, I just made that motion.
Wait, wait a minute, where I
Way at the bottom.
It says motion.
Okay, yes.
I'm okay, so was that everybody yes?
Aye.
I, yep, yes, from Doug.
You got that, Mike?
Yep, we're good, unless anybody voted no that we didn't hear.
I didn't hear a no.
Neither.
All right, item B. Discussion future meetings format and requirements.
Okay. So and and Walter, I know you and I were on the same meeting, so you can jump in. But essentially, the legislative session is now over, there have been a number of things that have kind of changed and that will impact this board. But one of the things that the law does require related specifically to virtual hybrid and in-person meetings. There's been some communications that have been pushed out by by the first selectman, and you may have seen them elsewhere, but basically, the the law that was passed allows for an in-person meeting, it allows for a hybrid meeting, and it allows for a a virtual meeting. You can have as a board, any one of those three. You can move between one of the three, and for various meetings, you don't need to pick one and stick with it forever. And so basically, without getting too down deep into the weeds, the long and short of it is, if you have an in-person meeting, you have an in-person meeting just like you normally would. There's some noticing requirements that are basically the same. If we have a virtual meeting, we continue as we are now. Caveat being if a member of the public requests not less than 24 hours prior to the meeting to be accommodated in person with a physical location to attend the meeting, the town has to accommodate that request. So if 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 on Thursday of last week, I got an email that said I want to attend this meeting, but I don't have a computer, the town would have been obligated to provide them with a physical location where they can participate in the meeting just as if they were signed into Zoom from home, so they have to be able to watch, speak, and hear in the same manner. If it's not more than 24 hours in advance, we do not have to honor the request, but if it is more than 24 hours in advance, we have to. And then for hybrid meetings, a lot of the requirements that we were obligated to post some of the meeting materials online and and make notice more than 48 hours in advance that it would not be held in person, a lot of those things stick. But the long and short of it is, each board has the authority to decide how they will continue to conduct their meetings. So this commission will have to make that make have that discussion and decide. I think I've pretty much covered everything. The one piece that we kind of have to deal with a little bit differently is that we obviously schedule legal notices multiple weeks in advance. And so it'll be a little bit trickier for us if someone makes a request and we have to kind of swap formats. But I'm working on some language that should give us that flexibility, but that's where we're at.
Well, I guess we got to start by seeing what people think on the on the commission.
Well, I think remote, like we've been doing, has served us well. The other option, I guess, would be go hybrid if some of us wanted to are fully vaccinated and wanted to meet, you know, at the in person at the old town hall, or I'm sorry, at the town office building. And everybody else could join virtually. I'm I'm open to either.
I I agree with Bob, I was gonna say the exact same thing, so.
I I'd like to meet in person again, that's what I'd like to do, but it doesn't sound like that's where we're going.
So Walter, something comes to mind, I believe it was Joe Lucia.
Yeah, he won't even come to a meeting.
Yeah, that he had trouble following with the microphones and the software, and he basically said, once we can have in-person meetings, he will, he will start attending, and I'm not sure if his position's the same way. So I guess somebody should, you know, try to reach out to him. And I don't know, Andy Marco, I haven't seen him on a virtual meeting in a really long time, so I don't know what his position is. As far as I go, and as far as I'm concerned, is like, having the flexibility of a hybrid hybrid meeting is is convenient sometimes, but I think it would be nice to get back to in-person meetings. Try to put this stuff behind us, but.
Well, I I've believed, you know, we did what we had to do to get through the worst of things. These meetings are not the same.
No.
They're not the same, we have people dropping in and out, there's there's communication issues. These meetings are best had in person, and to serve the public, if somebody can sit in a room and actually have the conversation, and we can look them in the eye, to me, that's pretty valuable.
Yeah.
That's just my opinion.
Well, I, the one thing that I would say, I'm I'm not opposed to having in-person meetings. There are still a number of people out there that aren't vaccinated and don't plan to be vaccinated. And if we have a hot button issue, and we have a room full of folks, where does that put the attendees?
Well, to me, it's the same as going shopping, you don't know who's vaccinated and who's not. I don't know at work who's vaccinated and who's not. And we could we could say this for the next year.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I feel, I I feel comfortable that I'm vaccinated, vaccines have worked for me, you know, to this point in my life.
I'm vaccinated too, but I'm not going to go around asking people if they are or aren't, that that's not my role.
Yeah, no, I I I get it, I get it.
And now that I'm back again, and now I'm on my phone, because my internet is not working right. I I think we should do hybrid meetings, because it allows for people who might not otherwise attend meetings to attend. And I do understand that even if we go to totally in person, you have to allow commission member to attend remotely if they request. I think that's part of the new law.
Mike, if we want to sit in the room down at the town hall, we have that right, correct? From what I understood.
Right, so if you guys decide to, that the law says that we have to accommodate a member of the public who wants a physical location.
I'll be there, they can come and they can come and sit with me.
Yeah, but but I think that for the purposes of of the way we we advertise the legal notices and and the town hall, certainly the upper level meeting room has the technology the town has acquired over the last couple of months. There's really no difference to us if we wanted to go in person versus hybrid. If I'm going to be there, I can run the Zoom from the room. And, you know, so so I think that we can make the transition and still provide the hybrid meeting link, so that people can attend if they're traveling through summer or or whatever. But it's no difference to me if I'm sitting in the room to run the meeting from there, and we can advertise that hybrid component, which will keep my legal notices correct when I advertise the location.
All right, we we need to hear from the other commissioners too that aren't here, can we reach out to them in the next day or so? That was Joe Lucia, Andy Marco.
Yep. Yeah, so what if if you could, just because this is obviously happening all at the same time with every board in town, and the one thing I have to verify is that the meeting room upstairs is available, so so what we will try to do is for the next meeting that we have, try to set it up as a hybrid. Unless something comes up that we can't, but but what I'm hearing is that should probably be the approach. And I'll reach out to Joe Lucia and Andy and let them know that that that's going to be our goal, and if they have thoughts that are significantly different, I'll I'll share them.
But by hybrid, that means those of us that want to go down to the town hall will be there, those that don't want to be, they'll be linked in.
Correct.
That's fair. If members of the public want to attend in person in that room that we're at at the town hall, they have that right.
Yep.
Perfect.
And it also allows for those people who maybe aren't as mobile, but maybe are attending more meetings, because they can do it from home, it allows them to also tune in.
Mike, you're muted.
Well, I I can't believe I did that after a year and a half. You know, we have a lot of people that actually watch these recordings after the fact, when I I post everything online. You know, we have almost 100 people that subscribe to the town's channel, and and these these videos do get recorded and viewed, so if we continue with the hybrid option, people will be able to follow along, even if they aren't able to attend.
Is there a motion needed, do we have to vote on this or anything?
No, I want, we we need to, I think we're gonna have hybrid, but we do need to see what Andy, Andy and Joe Lucia have to say.
Okay.
We'll reach out.
So the the decision is it's hybrid. Okay. All right. Approval of approval of business, item A, May, approval of minutes, sorry, May 18, 2021.
I move that we approved the minutes of May 18.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any correspondence, Mike?
Uh, no.
All right, public comment, the commission will hear brief comments at this time from anyone wishing to speak, no business can be conducted here, nor can any comments be made about any items on the agenda. Anyone from the public?
I see Ralph.
Whenever you guys are ready.
Go ahead, Ralph.
I sent an email to Mike this afternoon, or actually to the department downstairs about the business at the corner of 32 and 74.
I was gonna bring that up in a little while, Ralph, and
The junkyard that that has evolved there. My first impression when I saw that stuff appearing was that they were simply cleaning out the lower level. That does not appear to be the case anymore. And there was also some law enforcement action down there a few days ago, I don't know anything about that, other than
Yeah, we're we're all familiar with that, it was a big post on it, but no details on why.
Well, I don't do Facebook, so I didn't see anything on it, but I did see the troopers there. That business was never permitted for outside storage that I can tell, and it goes back to the April 2018 meeting, when you all approved that use there. So I I just, I filed a complaint about it, I just wanted to confirm that with y'all.
Yeah, thank you, Ralph, I believe Christina did too, so Mike, you want to comment on where we're at with this perhaps?
Sure. So, yeah, we, you know, for the last two weeks or so, three weeks ago, like, you know, we we have received a number of complaints from various people in in town via email and others. And so we did issue a notice of violation to the property owner. So it's not going to the address the owners in Stafford, so that I'm just gonna pull up the violation, so I can get you the date and get you the language. So certified mail was sent out on June 22. And it went to a to CSB properties in Stafford. So they were cited for a whole number of things, but basically what we're talking about, all the debris and vehicles and vehicle components. Yeah. So so that went out, I haven't gotten a delivery confirmation yet, because it's went out certified, but we also send a copy regular mail. So there is a pending enforcement action against the property.
Do we know anything about what that law enforcement action was for?
No, I I know there were a number of things going on with the property, I I went by that day, there was half a dozen police cars out front, but it's nothing that I I know anything about.
I'd rather not comment.
Just my my general opinion from riding by and looking at it, it's basically disgraceful, I I can see why people are upset. You know, you got a homemade sign, junk all over the place. Completely over the top, you know, for for doing illegal stuff.
That's the tip of the iceberg.
Yeah, that 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 kind of stuff can't stand, no way, you know, we got legitimate business in there. Yeah, that 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 kind of stuff can't stand. No way, you know, we got legitimate business in there. The guy's upset about it, you know, they. Just completely, one of the worst I've seen, like just. That blatant.
I saw an interaction that was recorded between the quote unquote manager. Of the property now and the one of the tenants and it was. It was really something over the top. There's more than meets the eye going on there, and that's why the police were there.
Well, hopefully it's resolved soon.
So they have, because our regulations don't.
Mike can't hear you.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on with my spacebar here. They have thirty days from the date of receipt. To basically contact us and say, we want to do it, but we need more time. To bring the property into compliance or to appeal the issuance of my order to the zoning board of appeals. So that's a statutory timeframe that's that's outlined. So so if there is, if it's delivered and the timeframe goes and there's no compliance, then we'll issue them a cease and desist and refer it to Hall and Sage.
Okay, well, we can talk about this all night, but it's not gonna solve the issue. We're gonna have to obviously play the process. And if there's anything like law enforcement wise going on, that's another, that's another matter.
So Mike, it's it's been two weeks, Mike, and you haven't gotten a return receipt yet saying that they've that it's been delivered?
Yeah, I actually just put in the tracking while we're and it says it's in transit. Sometimes because their physical signatures takes a little bit of time, but. Nothing yet.
Well, what that really means is that they're just avoiding service by not picking up their mail. Is is there a way to send a process server?
Yeah, like a similar like a marshal.
Yeah, constable in Massachusetts, we call them constables. Yeah. For forty bucks.
We could, we could do that. So generally, we will get a notification if delivery has been attempted. Which we haven't gotten yet. It just, it looks like it just left the Hartford. Distribution center yesterday, last night, July fifth. So I don't know what USPS is doing, but yes, if we can't get it to him via mail, then we have a, yeah, use a state marshal. It's like sixty bucks.
All right. Any further comment from the public? All right, staff report and discussion, item A legislative changes.
So, I mean, the biggest thing that we went that I went through was the the virtual meetings. There were some other things that came out of the legislative session that are kind of relate to land use. I'm gonna go through them quickly. And then basically moving down the line, we have some time, but we'll we'll deal with them as we need to. Accessory dwelling units, apartments, in law apartments, everybody calls calls them different things. The legislative session now towns have to allow them as of right. They basically means we can't have a public hearing. If we if we wanted to, we could opt out of that mandate. But we would have to also have the town's board of selectmen agree to opt out. Commissions can no longer deny an application citing that it would be disruptive to a town's quote character. The feeling was that character is this intangible thing that nobody can actually explain. And so so using that as 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 a baseline for a denial was not appropriate. There's some limitations to how many parking spaces you can require for a single family home or for an apartment accessory dwelling unit. Which we don't really have an issue with here. If you're doing zoning enforcement in Connecticut, you now need to be certified by CASIO. And there's a continuing education requirement as part of that. Mobile homes cannot be treated substantially different than a single family home. So you can't prohibit them in certain zones that you allow single family homes or or require more setbacks or whatever. There was a bill that allows for specific land use extensions given by this commission for. Certain types of permits, including subdivisions, which would allow the total timeframe or total lifespan of a permit to go up to nineteen years. We're trying to kind of figure out how that would work out because it's not for everything and it's at your discretion. There's a, there's some language which now says that a wetland permit in many cases will now track with the planning and zoning approval. So if someone goes to wetlands, like for example, Loves, and then they go to planning and zoning and it takes them five or six months to get through their their. Permit procurement, they don't want to lose six months on their wetlands permit because it took them that long to go through the process with P and Z. So this would basically say that both approvals track with the same expiration. And commissioner training, there is now a few hours every other year. I think it's four hours every other year that land use commissioners need to attend. So it's it's won't be a big deal. We'll get it through either Hall and Sage or some of the stuff that we go over. And and hopefully it won't be too demanding, but those are the biggest topics.
Hopefully that doesn't result in more people not willing to volunteer.
I sure hope so.
Because that that could potentially do that.
Yep, I agree.
The other thing, as you said, mobile homes, like, I think we're all familiar with what a traditional mobile home is. Does this also mean like tiny houses? They're on wheels?
Yeah, I don't know if if the what the statutory definition of mobile home is. To know if that would include it or not. I suspect it might. One of the things that that has also been sort of adjudicated in the last year or so. Not related to the session is that. You can't require minimums, so some, a lot of towns say that a minimum house size is a thousand square feet. So you can't tell someone how big they have to build something. You can tell them how big they can. You can limit it. So you can tell them that a house in the R three zone can only be twelve hundred square feet or less. But you can't force them to build a thousand square feet. So I suspect in line with that, a tiny house would would fly.
So you can build a two hundred square foot structure and say it's your house?
I'm afraid so.
Yeah, but doesn't it still have to pass all the things that you need for.
Yes.
Sanitation and.
Yep, and and you know, one of the calls that we get all the time is can I build my house out of shipping containers? And, you know, I suppose if you put a couple of them together, you can probably get a substantial size. But meeting the structural and the insulation and foundation requirements for the building code is more complicated. They need to have our values for heat and cooling and and a metal box is awful hard to show that. So that's usually where they get tripped up, but from our perspective. It's gonna be get, you know, probably something that we'll have to allow.
Okay.
Well, a traditional mobile home, you know, they they. It is stabilized and they insulate the bottoms so that it doesn't freeze in the winter, you know, the water. And all of that, and I think what their their attempt probably is to allow people to. Have more affordable homes and not have to build a McMansion to afford a house, you know, maybe that's their logic. I don't know.
Yep, that's exactly it.
That'll be interesting. You already see that from before zoning. There's a lot of stuff like that in town.
Yeah, no, there is, and you know. Some of this stuff, you know, will require that we tweak our regulations a little bit. So, I mean, we have some time. These things take effect. But but it's not like we have to hurry up and get it done, so we'll start kind of churning through these things as everybody agrees to what they actually say. There's some language that people are still kind of quibbling over, and then if we have to change our regs and do some text amendments, we will.
Okay. Summer meetings, item B.
So the only reason I put this on here is kind of in line with the hybrid virtual in person meetings discussion. But, you know, typically through July and August, it can be hard to get a quorum, so I just wanted to throw it on there. In case anybody knew they were gonna be unavailable, so that if we had to start thinking about meetings that we couldn't hold. Get it out in front of it, but there's nothing really to discuss here.
Yeah, I'm gonna be on vacation the the last two weeks of the month.
July?
Yes.
Anybody else know of any long stand, long term vacations that may affect forum?
I'll email it to you since since the microphone's on. I'd rather not have it on the public record. I'll send you an email.
Okay, no problem.
It may be gone, but it looks like it won't be during a meeting, maybe early September, but.
Okay.
Of course, I can always zoom in by phone.
Yep. All right, well, you know, I don't have anything immediately on the horizon, two weeks out. So if people aren't around, you know, we can always elect not to meet. But if if something comes up, you know, you're gonna be not around, let me know. And we'll take it from there and and I'll try to reach out when we talk to Joe and Andy to put that on their radar too.
So you'll be letting us know when the interactions with Loves and the firm that's going to be clerk of the works is happening?
Yeah, I suspect there will be a number of them, so what I'll. My goal is, once we kind of get everything organized, to get some type of regular reporting that, you know, either they can feed to me. And then as things come up, you know, maybe, you know, once a month or every every six weeks, they can come to the commission. I think that they are talking about, and I don't wanna misspeak for the total number, but I I think they're gonna be under a hundred. And fifty days. Total construction duration, so that that excludes weekends, that excludes holidays. They need to be on site for about a hundred and fifty days to get it built. That's the plan, so they want to be in and out.
All right, anything else?
Nope.
All right, it is, let's see, eight thirteen P M, meeting adjourned.
Okay, thank you. Good seeing everybody.
Good night, everybody.